Okay, welcome everybody to the Old South Town Hall. And especially the people who managed to bake it here because it's so snowy outside. Like snowmageddon on the day and time that we're trying to host this thing, right? So, thank you very much and thank you for the people who are able to join us online as well. I know many people can because of cars or even just walking in the snow. So it's nice to get together tonight and have this little get-together. So I'm gonna quickly go through the agenda of what we're gonna tackle and dive right into it here. So we're gonna have a conversation with the business owners that were affected by the fire on Wortley Road recently. So Shashua, Village Tale, and Westland Gallery. And we're gonna be talking about the damage and impact assessment and the community response and the way forward where we go from here. And with that, supporting recovery. So we're also gonna slide in there talking about the Black Walnut Cafe and its rebuild. It's coming, it's not as fast as everyone was hoping for or expecting. So we're making progress here, we'll touch on that. And how the tenants are doing after the fire, how they're faring, and how they've been helped with the Red Cross and the city and the likes. And then we'll get the first responders' response on all of this as well. So before we get going, I'm gonna welcome up from the Old South Community Organization, where is she, Nicole Phillips, come on up here, she's the president. She's gonna speak about tonight's gathering and the OSCO perspective and the community's response as well.
Forget my squeaky boots, it's very wet up there. So hello and good evening, I'm Nicole Phillips, I'm the current president of OSCO. We also have other OSCO board members that I'm gonna point out and embarrass real quick. Ian being one of them, Margaret at the back. Hey. Alrighty, so the Old South Community Organization is deeply saddened to see yet another of our community members suffering due to fire. I think as we will probably get into it tonight, this seems to be eerily similar to where we've been a few months ago. For those that have lost their homes, their businesses, their favorite places to go, this community resonates with your heartbreak during this incredibly difficult period. And while these are challenging times, the community is rallying together, not only through meetings like these hosted by communities, but also through individual neighbors' actions to try and support where they can and what they can during this period. These types of actions just demonstrate the resiliency in our community. The outpouring of support that I know many of these individuals will probably speak to tonight has really resonated for the fact that we live in a very, very great neighborhood where you can go and ask your neighbors for support and you will receive. So thank you to the community that has shown up tonight for your support and for your ongoing support moving forward. I will leave it up to Ian to emcee for the evening. But should anyone have any questions or concerns or feel like they just want to have a chat, you can come approach myself after the fact or any of the OSCO board members if you'd like to learn more or just need a point of connection. Take care, guys.
Thank you. So I should start by saying thank you to the Old South Community Organization for being a great sponsor of tonight's event, helping it come together, as well as London Living Real Estate who has sponsored and helped us with the livestream tonight, and the Old South Business Association which I'm a part of and a few members here tonight as well who are doing whatever they can to help out businesses in this area. So my name is Ian Leishman, I'm with both boards and really proud to be a resident here in the Wortley Village area. And we're gonna be introducing our guests here, the panel we're gonna be talking to. So I'll go from, I guess it would be your left to right, right? So at first here we have Shereen Snellin from Shashua. And then in the center we have Cindy Rona and she's from a Village Tale. And Al Stewart from Westland Gallery. And I'm just gonna sneak over here, grab that microphone and we'll switch things up from the side. Okay. So I guess first of all, we can start by going one after another about what your first response was, how you heard about the fire and so on. And you know what, I almost forgot, I have some slides here to show for those who haven't seen all of what happened with the fire. So this was exactly a week ago today. This is a shot from someone who's living pretty close, obviously it looks like a couple of blocks away, but you can see the fire is really going up high above the tree line there. So it was a pretty big fire. And here's a shot of it, you know, pretty much getting out, but a lot of firefighters working hard on it. And you can see here, it's just a sea of red and blue with the police out there and the fire. And then here's a shot that ended up in the newspaper and the like, which was courtesy of the London Fire Department. So I guess we'll start with you, Shereen. So how did you hear about it, what was your first response to it?
So I was sleeping and my neighbor called me like 20 times. And then finally we woke up and picked up the phone. And when he told me the building was on fire, I just not, couldn't believe it. I said, "I think you have the wrong number." And then we went over and it was very dramatic with all the, you know, firefighters and all the scene was just like, I couldn't believe it. Devastating.
And then I guess I'll be over to you Cindy, and your first reaction?
So I was awoken by Shereen calling me at about quarter to 2:00 AM. And again, I think I was just in complete shock. So I rushed over to the scene and they had the street blocked off by that point. So I was just walking up Wortley Road and just seeing the scene, again, just in complete shock. Saw the smoke, saw the flames, I just had no idea the extent of it. And yeah, it was extremely traumatic.
Al from Westland Gallery.
I got a call from the neighbor that lives across the street from the building. And he had quarter to 1:00 and he said that Shays was on fire. I might wanna come down, so I raced down. And when I got there, it was ablaze. I asked the firemen if I could go into my building because I wanted, it wasn't on fire. And I wanted to get inside and he said, "No." They kept me out, but they said, "We've been in it and we've checked and it's, you're okay, so far." So they kicked my back door in to get in. I said, "I gave you my keys," and he said, "You didn't give them to us soon enough." So that was cool, I'm okay, they were great guys. But as you saw, they were all on my roof. Yes.
Okay, so with that, why don't we go again through you guys and give a damage and impact assessment kind of as you understand it because we're still figuring things out. So Shereen, we'll start with you.
It's hard to say, the insurance company is still investigating. I can't, I think I lost so far what it looks like. We're gonna lose everything in the store. The amount of water and that came through the store, I don't think anything can be saved.
And again, my insurance company is still working through this. We have been working with the landlords' insurance as well, trying to figure this out. We are hopefully going to reopen soon. However, the complication that we are running into is that our food room was directly underneath the apartment that was on fire. So there was a lot of water damage. So we've had to have a lot of different inspections this week. And structural engineers out, environmental testing. So we just don't have any real concrete opening date yet. We're just kind of a waiting game as we get all of the results and reports back.
Before we get to you, Al, I'm gonna share some pictures here on the screen. Spin around. So this is, these are some shots of Shashua. So this is after the fact courtesy of Shereen here. You can see there's a lot of debris on the outside. And what I find amazing with this shot is you can see to the left, Westland Gallery, you can still see all of the artwork hanging beautifully, looking untouched. We'll get to exactly what's happening with Westland Gallery shortly. But here's Shashua, this is not going to be reopening. They estimated $2 million of damage and it's pretty much the Shashua part of that building. These are just some shots that you took of the inside. And then the Village Tale, these are shots that I got from Cindy. So the inside here, lots of water damage. Don't know how much is gonna be salvageable, but you see, this is the back of the building. Not looking good. And then you put some tarps on there, I guess maybe from water still coming down. We're gonna come to this in a moment. But over to you, Al. And the damage and the assessment of the impact.
Well, the first thing was my, I broke my door. My basin filled with water, which I think caused the smell. There was a little bit of smell of smoke in there, but not as bad as I was afraid. I think it was more of a chemical smell and I think it came from the water being washed down from the building. My furnace kicked out, we were able to get that repaired. My biggest concern right now is that they were, there were 12 firefighters on my roof, which was amazing, but they knocked the wall, the brick wall from the building down onto my roof. And unfortunately, there's been snow up there ever since and they can't, there's been no assessment done. So we're supposed to get rain on Monday and our concern is that there's holes in the roof and I don't know what's gonna happen next. But I'm not making a claim for anything yet. So I could hear the bullet go whoosh by me because I dodged it and we were good, so.
And then something else that was really interesting is that you could see from various aspects, when the fire was fully engulfed, that the firefighters did a phenomenal job of keeping it away from your building. And we don't know what's happening with the roof fully and, you know, insurance have to help out in some way with that, which is good. And then you reopened.
In two days, it took two days of a lot of work, like it was, but honestly, I had neighbors knocking at the door. There was so much help coming around to help. It was, yeah, two days of being able to struggle and get things back. And the smell wasn't there and it looked like it was a safe environment to be in. Yeah, we were able to reopen and people just keep stopping. And I've told the story a million times now and I'm okay with that. It's a good story.
And so what would you like to say to the fire department?
Oh, I've already, they were kind enough to come by a day later and just say hi. I asked one of my firemen friends if he could bring the crew by and I thanked them all. And told, like, it was truly the most amazing thing I've ever seen. There were 12 men standing on top of my roof. It looked like a football team up there, like these guys, defensive line, they were not letting it come through. And the captain that I spoke to said that they, he told them all, "This is not gonna get to this building." But he said, "I truly wasn't sure," because he said, "I was afraid it was gonna jump, but I didn't let them know that." I just said, "Let's stop this." And he said, "They were able to." I was, yeah, I was very impressed. They were, and the insurance lady I've spoken to said she's never seen anything like this, that our fire department was, what they did and how they handled it was above and beyond anything she's seen yet.
Why don't you explain with your hands the distance between the buildings?
About that much.
Crazy.
Yeah, there's nothing between it.
Yeah.
But there was a brick wall built up there. Then the fire marshal showed me and he said, "You see that wall up at the top there? That's called a firewall." He said, "And they knew 150 years ago that that would save your building?" And it did. And it eventually knocked it down during the fire, but he said, "That's what saved your building." So, yeah.
From when they built it over 100 years ago, crazy.
Yep.
So yeah, we gotta be really thankful to first responders. We, yeah, yeah, for sure. And we were gonna have Deputy Chief Matt Heptich come from the London Fire Department, but he's totally snowed in as many people are. So we still are very happy to have Sergeant Chris Andrews from the London Police Department. Do you wanna come up here and grab the microphone for a minute? Just to speak a bit about the police perspective and, you know, perhaps reporting, prevention and that sort of thing briefly?
Hey, everybody, thanks for having me. My name is Chris Andrews, I have been a police officer here for 19 years. I grew up in London, so it's a place I've always lived. Very familiar with Old South. November 28th, we get a call, we respond with fire. And I'll echo everything that's been set up here. London Fire Department, one of a kind, very, very good service. And they did a great job in this case, they usually do, right? In almost every case. So that goes for the police, that goes for the fire department. And I wasn't one of the police officers, so I'm not trying to take any credit here. But the officers on the road that were there did a great job. The fire department did a great job, paramedics that respond do a great job. And I don't wanna lose track of that. So all credit goes to those officers that are the first responders that are up there. In terms of my role here, I just wanna be here to make sure that you guys are aware that we fully stand with you, we support you, we understand that you guys have had two unfortunate large fires in the last little bit. I am coming from the street crime area where we investigate the arson's. I was involved in the Black Walnut one a little bit. It's super unfortunate, you guys aren't being targeted, I want you to know that. There's no reason to think that there's anything else that's going to happen. But 100% we do stand with you. The other thing I wanted to say, and I was talking to Ian a little bit earlier, super important for the police, every time something happens, it needs to be reported, whether that's online, whether it's an officer coming out. Because it's these little things where someone says, "Oh, like, it's small potatoes, we don't wanna send anyone out, we don't wanna bother the police." We wanna be bothered. We need to know all that information because when we know that information, like, information is power for us, right? And we can dedicate and direct our resources in that area. So 100%, regardless of what it is, make sure you're reporting it to the police, however it's reported, just make sure we have that information.
Thank you so much.
No problem.
I appreciate it. As I trip you and you're leaving. Alright, now why don't we get to the community response and how you have gotten phone calls and emails and messages through social media and your thoughts on that? Shereen?
That's, I think on Friday, I've been crying all day because I was, I'm so, I cried now, but it's so overwhelming, all the, I don't know, you go, you support and flowers, cards, emails, WhatsApp, all. Beautiful, thank you. Yeah.
This community really comes together at a time like this, I feel like. And I'm really thankful for that. I can't imagine going through this alone. Even, you've been really supportive and you're also going through it at the same time, same as you. So I am just so grateful to be a part of this community. Like the offers of support and offers to help in any way, it's just, it has been really overwhelming. And I'm extremely thankful for everyone who's reached out.
I just can't, I have to agree, it's been, yeah, people, like I said, people showing up at my door with pails and mops and offering to help, food being dropped off. The next morning, I went home from the fire at 3:30 and by 6:30, my phone was dinging off though. It was, yeah, it didn't stop. And it's, I, yeah, the neighborhood is the best ever. We've always said that. Yeah, it is, it's fabulous. Thank you all for the support.
And the flowers here behind us are flowers that Shereen brought. She's like, "I have so many flowers at my house, we can put some flowers in the set here, no problem." And you've got tons more flowers in your house. So it has been an incredible response and wow, it just makes me really, feel really proud to be a part of Old South in any way, right? Because, yeah, all the love that's been shared. And a lot of it has to do with the appreciation of the incredible businesses that you guys run. That's an important fabric of the Wortley Village area, so.
Thank God, this great opportunity. Miley Group, they will, they will take me in for a month, so thank you so much. That's so generous of you, thank you.
Yeah, let's go down that path. So the way forward, and I played this a little bit earlier, too, a little bit too fast. Oh, I'm going the wrong way now. Hold on, hold on. Here it is, yeah, there's Shereen and Uriah, there's her husband. And they're holding the Shashua banner there in front of the Miley Group building. Some people may remember that as the old fur boutique. And so they very kindly offered space there for you to go in. And we have some pictures actually, I, hold on, here we go. This is the setup, the temporary setup, right? And I want you to talk about what you're selling too, because you've got a team of people that's furiously making items to sell. So over to you about that and I'll share a couple more photos.
So most of my gift shop is handmade jewelry. I have two fabulous ladies here, Alyssa and Katrina. One of the eight ladies that comes to my house every day and we're trying to make so much we can so we can open tomorrow. And I have lots of tuch, hats, winter hats, gloves, just anything fabulous you think you might need, just come over to Miley Group and see me.
And then I guess I'll switch over to you, Al, because you're open as well. I mean, you can certainly, certainly support Shereen there. And then you're also gonna be at part of a festival on Friday, we'll touch on that shortly. And then, Al, you've been open, you have the Square Foot Show. And people can support by going there, checking it out, maybe buying some local art, it's fantastic. Wanna speak to that briefly?
You're looking for commission, aren't you?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We had our opening the day of the fire. So from 4:00 till 8:00, we did our opening. And then there's 481 pieces on my wall and 300 artists. And it's the biggest show we do and the most work we do all year. And then we get this thrown on top of it. So it's a little bit more work, but it's been great. The people that have come, mostly to come and wish, well, not, people come to wish us well and to see how we're doing and then stick around and look at the show. And it's been, it's been fabulous. Everyone's supporting and people are buying art and giving presents. And so, yeah, it's just so good. Even considering we've lost two days of business, we've done okay so far with the support from the community. And the arts community as well.
Now with Cindy and a Village Tale, we don't have any reopening inside. There's still a lot to investigate and figure out with getting heat and hydro on and stuff like that, right?
Yeah, so we've run into some complications this week and just some setbacks and our hands are tied basically at this point. We have to wait on all of the reports and make sure that it's even safe to enter. But we are coming up with a plan to hopefully reopen soon. Yeah, it's just a matter of getting the okay that we can occupy the space again and then obviously having our utilities up and running. But yes, we will be back soon, hopefully, sooner than later. No, I don't have power yet.
Alright, so we're gonna touch on shortly on how you, and people who are maybe watching right now, how you can help these people out directly. But first, I'd like to get Margaret Hopkins from the Old South Community Organization to come on up. Margaret, maybe use this microphone over here. And she has an update on the Black Walnut and the rebuild, which is underway slowly. And we'll also speak about the tenants and how they're faring in this tough time.
Hello. First, I would, if Ron Lawrence is around, Ron, are you there? He's not, okay. I just wanna say a shout out to the YMCA for affording us the opportunity to come into this beautiful space. I think it kinda helps us feel a little more resilient to see that a heritage building like this can survive. And I'm sure that you will too. Okay. And Mandy wants to send along, Mandy from Black Walnut, wants to send along her best wishes to everyone. She wanted to be here, but unfortunately she has children that are involved in sports, so she had to be with them tonight. And she wanted to pass along the fact that, yes, they're real building. And the irony is, on the Monday, the shovels hit the ground on Black Walnut's rebuild. And then on the Thursday. So it's tragic, but she is coming back to us. And if you want to still support Mandy, she is doing her large Christmas baking right now, so you can order online. So please do that in the interim, because we all love our Black Walnut Bakery. So they'll be back. I also wanted to speak to the response, just for everybody's reference. If, should this happen to you, what happens to people that are displaced, businesses and tenants as well? And we do have one of the tenants of the building here, Rob, if you could just put up your hand and wave. So Rob is here and thank you, Rob, for coming. I'm just gonna give a little bit of a response from the city as to how it all works. So in the event of a fire in a residential unit, the emergency medical services and the Canadian Red Cross are typically the first primary points of contact to support the residents. So the Red Cross Disaster Relief and Recovery Team can provide food, shelter, clothing, and essential items for up to 72 hours. And Rob confirmed that's exactly what happened. So that's awesome. During the first 24 to 48 hours, it is recommended that the following things happen. If you have insurance, call your insurance company. For assistance with housing, call right away. And there is a coordinated access team and a phone number. And Rob, if you don't have that, I can share it with you. Explain your situation, that you are temporarily being helped by the Red Cross and will need housing assistance before you check out from the Red Cross. If you receive support from Ontario Disability Support Program or Ontario Works, call your ODSP caseworker and let them know about your situation and what has just happened. And if you're unable to connect with your caseworker, you can either go in person to the London, Ontario Works or your ODSP office. If you do not currently receive support from ODSP or OW, have no homeowner or tenant insurance and need financial assistance, you may apply for discretionary benefits. So there is a number for that and if anybody needs that, let me know. If you need to apply for Ontario Works, there is a general number for that. If you need to apply for ODSP, there is also a number for that. London, Ontario Works offices are at the City Plaza downtown. London, Ontario Works contact numbers and general information, I've got all that here. And I will share this, I think I have already with you Ian. So, and I will make it available in our socials as well. And the ODSP offices information. So the city was really great in supplying this information. They had wanted to be here in person so that they could be the ones relaying this information, but they may be their person to do that for them. I'd also like to say at this point in time that there is, because everybody in the community has been asking, "How can we help the tenants?" There is a GoFundMe for Rob and there's the QR code for that. So if anybody wants to scan that, I will have that available and you can come see me. Alrighty, so thank you to this community. I cannot say once again that we do live in the best neighborhood in Canada. And I'm proud to be a part of that, so thank you very much.
Okay, so with that, we're gonna move forward, I guess, with how else we can help. So, so with that, we're gonna move forward, I guess, with how else we can help. And, and one way, of course, we already touched on, is Al's open for business, Shereen will be open for business tomorrow. Yes, of course. Fair enough. Thank you for coming and, yeah, reach out to OSCO in particular, they've got a lot of connections that could help you further, and wish you all the best. Thanks for coming. Cheers. So, as far as the way forward, yes, you're open for business, if you can support these people, of course. So, small business really is the backbone of our economy, and, and these people work really hard to provide great products and services, and we're lucky to have them in Old South and Wortley Village. So, please support them. And, you know, because it's December and a really important time for, for retailers in particular, this is really tough. I mean, you don't have the kind of inventory, you know, you had before anywhere close, so you need help with rebounding. And something that does come up is insurance, right? And we could have a long conversation about how great insurance is, because it is great. We could also have some conversations about some of the challenges and the timing of insurance and all that, but we're gonna skip that and get to how we really could help these people with some, some fundraising. And so, what we have is this set up right now. If you go to oldsouthba.com/firerecovery, we have an online fundraiser right now, and the proceeds are gonna be going to both of these businesses to, to help them out. So, I encourage you to please go and donate, if you're able to, not everybody can, it is a tough time of year, but if you're able to go and donate, even just a small amount, every little bit counts, and, and it would be really worthwhile. We also have a fundraising raffle that is coming soon. The, all of the business owners up and down the, the Wortley Village Business District have reached out different times, different ways, saying it differently. "We want to help and we want to do something," so there's a raffle coming together with different items from all of those businesses. So, they're coming together to try to do what they can for you. That'll probably come out mid next week, something like that, and encourage everyone to try to get in on that raffle situation as well. And before we, before we wrap up, just over to you for any final thoughts that you want to say, if at all, if not, that's okay.
I would just, I just again, wanted to thank the fire department. The firefighters that were out, they were, went above and beyond. I mean, they ran into a burning building to find an arson. So, yeah, they're spectacular. Thanks.
Yes, that's exactly what I was going to say. I just want to thank the community again. I can't tell you how much I appreciate all of the support from everybody, all the other business owners, my customers, just members of the community. It's really been overwhelming and it's very much appreciated.
Excellent. And, and as far as the money goes when it comes in, I've said this a different way to other people, you know, if they end up getting, you know, X amount of dollars, they're not gonna use it on a round the world tour trip, right, on a boat somewhere. These three in particular, with their businesses, have helped out the community in so many ways. Like, there are so many festivals and events that happen in Old South, and when you ask them if they can support, you get a yes. So, this is our turn to support them in return, just to help them bounce back in any way they can. So, that's really appreciated. And with that, and there's a big event that's happening, and it's gonna be tomorrow and Saturday, and Nicole, do you want to come up and just speak about that briefly, about Christmas in the village? She's like, "I didn't know I was gonna do this," but Nicole knows a lot about Christmas in the village, can touch on the different aspects briefly.
Yeah, so just to reiterate there, we do have Christmas in the village that specifically happens on Saturday, so it'll be the 10th. We've got activities running from about 10 till 5, but more specifically, there are the chalets, which are the Christmas chalets that Margaret helps run there, and that's running tomorrow night. So, that's Friday night, out front of the normal school here. You'll see all the chalets up, lovely lights. We have the snow ambiance for that now. And that, Margaret, I believe that's 4:30 or 5 to? 4 to late. There you go.
Yeah, highlight, Shereen's could have a chalet there too.
Excellent. So, the, the Christmas market's running both tomorrow night and Saturday, and then the main Christmas in the village stuff is happening Saturday, and that has a variety of kids' activities and adult activities running throughout the length of the village. You can find more on the Christmas in the Wortley Village Facebook page, as well as there's links on both the OSCO website and I believe the ODSPA's website as well. Great.
Perfect. So, the OSCO website is oscolondon.ca, and this one here, you can see, the oldsouthba.com for more information on that and everything else that's happening in the village. And just to wrap up, we gotta say some thanks to Dave Stevens and iPowered Media for the livestream. Thank you so much. We started a little bit later, nothing to do with any of what he's doing, but we managed to figure that out, thanks to him. And we also gotta say thanks to Ron Lawrence, the YMCA Buildings Manager, where are you? He's hiding somewhere, but he's, he's been instrumental in helping us use this building and get us prepared for tonight. And what a building it is, such rich history with the building and, and with Wortley Village. So, in wrapping up, I'd like to echo what, what we heard from Margaret, whereas we do live in the best neighborhood, don't we, right? It really is. That's what we keep hearing over and over again, "The best neighborhood, the best city, the best province, in the best country in the world." Thanks for being here, everybody, and thanks for watching. We'll wrap this up right now. Good night.